For Monday, March 20th, 2017. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Mr. DeCantor?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Swinney?
Present.
Mayor Holliday?
Present.
Mr. Hochheiser?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
And Mr. Minn?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would you please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Holliday. This brings us to our session of public comment. If there was anybody in the audience that would care to address the committee, could you please stand and state your name and your address? And try to keep your comments to about two minutes or less? Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on in our agenda, consent agenda. Warrants.
Mr. Warrens. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $252,478.90 be approved and forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Second, Warren. I move that the following named bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate of $25,842.18 be approved, forwarded to the city auditorium for payment. There are no conflicts.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Members of the committee, could you please turn your attention to the Newburyport School Committee business meeting minutes of Monday, March 6th? Could I hear a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Could I hear a second?
Second.
Comments, suggestions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously again. And this evening, we are fortunate to have our Newburyport School Committee rep, Jake Lane, back fresh off the play. It's good to see you. How'd the play go?
It went great, thanks.
Did you have fun?
Yeah, I had a lot of fun.
Good.
Alright, so a lot of stuff happening. All, spring sports start today, so tryouts are going on right now. It's actually in the gym. Tomorrow, MCAS long contesting for sophomores starts tomorrow, go through Tuesday through Friday. Hamlet auditions are today and tomorrow. Special Olympics basketball met today at the Brown School. It was a change from the high school to the Brown School just because this week we had, obviously, the tryouts for other sports. Musical, just a note, went great. Over 60 kids involved. On behalf of the Theater Department, they'd like to thank the NEF for their generous donations and help with the show. NHS Costa Rica trip is coming up, and people are getting excited for that especially. Best Buddies will meet Wednesday, March 29th, and Career Expo for Visual Arts is on Wednesday, March 22nd.
What's Best Buddies?
Best Buddies is actually, I think it's a fantastic group. It's like an interactive club where kids just come together and we all hang out. And activities like you watch a movie, or you play games. And the kids with disabilities especially, like they really get to enjoy the time because it's not so often that, like, they're in the exact same class with some of the other kids. So when you can join a club together and all mingle and just have a good time. That's why I love programs like Best Buddies and Special Olympics.
That's great. Is it high school, all just high school kids?
Yes. But I know they have some sort of, like, thing at it down at the Knock Mill School. But at the high school, Sean was suggesting starting the work.
That's great.
It's a national organization.
Yeah.
Sure.
I would just like to comment on the contribution of the NEF to the lights and sound and rigging it for the play. And I think, since I've been here, I think I've attended every play that has been produced here. And this was the first play where, and I was sitting right by the orchestra. I was literally right beside it, and I could hear every single performer clearly.
Yeah, we got a whole new system optimized.
It was amazing. The music was phenomenal, and it never overshadowed any of the acting. And it really is, it's an amazing system. So, again, I mean, the contribution that NEF has made here is going to benefit our students for many, many, many years to come.
It was very much needed.
Yes, yes.
That was really, that was great.
Thank you. Tryouts or homework?
Ah, I might just stay because my parents aren't picking up, so.
Well, that's a good reason. Welcome.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is the Newburyport Junior Clippers Special Olympics Track Team Request for Field Use. And I think, Kim, you're here to speak on that?
(Inaudible) tenth season using the Fuller Field track. And we've always kind of had to make this request to have it, you know, in off-hours because La Crosse has always been, you know, a group that we've had to share the usage of the track time with. So we're asking if we could use the track April 16th through June 11th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:30. Again, we've kind of always used it outside of the window for Sundays, and I don't think that we've ever had an issue with any of the others. We have about, I think, 30 athletes that'll be joining us this season and about the same number of volunteers.
That's great.
I don't know if anybody else has any questions?
I just wanted, didn't we approve La Crosse?
That's what I'm looking back at.
On Sunday from 4:09 to 6:11, from 10:00 to 5:00?
From 10:00 to 5:00.
I spoke with the athletic director.
This is what I called you about, they got denied.
And I think that we can ask for the extra half hour, and I think it's going to be doable.
So, La Crosse got denied. Kyle told me I couldn't have everything. I couldn't really follow all the conversations, tell you the truth, but there was a crossover. And so...
I thought we kept this time sacrosanct for the Olympics, the Special Olympics.
I can find the email and I'll read it to you. So I don't really know, but...
Which, it seems like there's a half hour problem in terms of when? Because you want to start April when?
9:00 to 10:30.
Sundays.
9:00 to 10:30. But we really, just with our group, we can't have La Crosse coming right at 10 o'clock and having our athletes trying to leave the track. It would just be, there'd just be too much going on for our group. Sometimes when people come early, they'll be, you know, tossing La Crosse balls around, and again, we couldn't have that. Even if it's set away, La Crosse balls are kind of dangerous. But more than anything, I think it's the commotion that people coming early. It's my experience that if the window's 10, people will be there at 9:30.
Okay, so we have got to go back and talk to
Kyle.
La Crosse about them having to come a half an hour later.
We've got to talk to Kyle, too, it sounds like. He signed off on the original La Crosse one. So he sent me an email, and I'll pull it up so I can read it to you guys, but they are currently under the impression that they can only have it from 1:00 to 5:00. Or 1:00 to 6:00, I think they gave the time at the end of the day Sunday. But that they were not approved before 1:00 on Sundays.
Who are you referring to, Dave?
Pat.
Pat, okay. I had a brief conversation with Pat that I'll just share with people, and he said his, and it was a very casual conversation in which he said to me, "If we need to make accommodations for Special Olympics, we're happy to do that." So I don't think that it's going to be a problem, but I think that we can clarify it with Kyle.
So I think we should just approve your time now and then work out.
I think we're just trying to work.
Push the La Crosse back, because you've been doing this for, you think so, too?
I actually think everybody's, I think it will work out for everybody.
I agree.
Just fine. Great, and thank you very much.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Do you approve?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just, the superintendent's signature isn't on there, so I was just wondering if that was the difficulty, but we'll make arrangements.
So we made a motion to approve in a second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
I will follow up with Kyle, and I will send an email out to the school committee.
Thank you.
So, Kyle told Pat, I'm just reading this, that we approved, this is the email from Kyle to Pat, "We approved 1:00 to 5:00 on Sundays." And that's what Kyle approved. So I'm just going to say it again, we have a flaw in the way this operates. That would be great if we could work it out.
And our policy committee's taking a look at that.
We're taking a look at, not how it operates, but on the actual policy.
Right.
Requires people to come and get the, get our dispensation for going outside the schedules on weekends.
And we are asking Kyle to come to our next meeting.
Policy meeting.
Great.
Can I ask a quick question about that? So is the policy going to remain that the fields can only be used 1:00 to 5:00 and the teams have to?
I don't think the policy committee's made that decision yet, if I can speak to that.
I think that's what you were just saying.
The policy committee has taken a look at it, and at this point, and we came up with a recommendation that we put on hold at the request of the mayor while the construction finished at the Fuller Field. But I would assume that that will again be the case, that we remove the early morning restrictions, or the Sunday early morning restrictions from the policy so that it'll follow the normal structure. And it'll be time that's available to the athletic director to be used without having to come get our special permission each time.
Great.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm just curious if the school committee approves the time changes. Does Kyle still have the last word on scheduling? I'm just not sure how that works.
I don't think we've ever had that happen before.
I think we've always worked it out, but the reason that a person would come here is because it's our policy. It's a school committee policy. To not go outside the parameters of what we have in our document.
If we open up the parameters of use for the field outside the normal hours, and there's more than one applicant, does he still?
He still, absolutely.
He would have control over that.
Just like a school principal always has control over who rents their auditorium. Same. Chain of command to make sure we have one point person for each type of facility.
We'll get it right.
Would it make sense at some level to have a date? Like, if you want to use the fields in the spring, could you put in requests by? Or if you want to, it's not as much of an issue in the spring as it is the fall, because there are fewer sports, but...
That's already part of the policy, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but I want to say that what was there, one of the things that Kyle requested was that it's either a two- or a three-week window. I don't remember which, David, off the top of my head, but I know that already exists, so.
Great.
It's there. I'm just looking, it isn't on the form.
All right. No, I didn't know if it was...
The form was about a six-page form?
Yeah.
And all we get is a two-page document. Details, something.
Okay, well, thank you. Next is an update on our capital plan and facilities budget by the Director of Facilities, Steve Bergholm. Would you like to join us?
Did everyone receive copies? Because I do have extra copies here of the capital plan, if anyone would like them, complete with fuller pictures.
I have a copy.
You may.
And Mr. Bergholm, experienced firsthand the driveway on the way into the high school this evening. As you had mentioned in this, that it's crumbling because people are parking there.
People are parking all over. Susan, can I take a copy of the capital plan?
Sure.
Lot of copies as well. Thank you very much.
Is this different?
Yes.
Is this different?
This is the updated.
I think Steve just passed these out.
That's the budget.
I want to get them over there.
Yep, that's just the budget. This is not.
Alright, so let's actually start with the budget, is that okay?
This document.
You open, so the first page behind the cover. It's put a comparison there of the facilities department budget over the past 14 years. Sort of illustrate that it's pretty much stayed pretty even over that time. If you compare the proposed budget I've got for FY '18 all the way back to FY '05, there's only a $17,000 difference in that time. That's, you know, that's less than a 1% increase in 14 years, even though we've been up and down a little bit here and there. So we've been...
That's impressive.
We've been pretty steady in that regard. Next page gives you a comparison by school between FY '17 and FY '18. So you can see the ups and downs a little bit here. And I'll explain those more in detail as we get to each of the pages. So you see an increase in system-wide, in HBAC, in the high school, but then you see a small drop at Knock. And Mullen and Bresnahan are up just a little bit. Overall, the increase for the proposed budget is 3.95% compared to last year compared to FY '17. The following page breaks it down by different categories that I like to look at each year, including salaries, utilities, which you see a little bit of a decrease again, once again there. Supplies, looking for a bit of an increase. We're finding some of the parts that we need to repair, some of the newer equipment in the Bresnahan and middle school are a little bit more expensive than what the old parts were, just because they were sophisticated. So there's a little bit of an increased cost there. And more mechanical equipment on the Bresnahan roof has a lot more filters in it than the older equipment, so we need a little bit extra there. Equipment purchase.
Mr. Bergholm.
So you're proposing to add a full-time staff to your...
We, that's a high school position. Just in the past couple months, we actually did add a position, working with the superintendent's office and asked me. I've been here a few times, and we talked about the difficulties that we've had maintaining the high school, the condition of the high school, and the strain that all the overtime puts on the staff here with all of the weekend work and nights. We were able to work out a position in the current budget to create a new position that works. It's actually a Wednesday-through-Sunday position, so it helps to absorb some of those weekend hours.
We needed to get creative because of the fact that we were having, it was getting to the point where it was going to be difficult to cover all of the activities that we had. And I think we came up with a pretty creative solution in terms, and we had to, we had to work with the union in order to get them to buy into this position, if you will. But so far, it seems to be working, and I, for one, can say that I have seen a difference in what we're seeing at the high school in terms of the way the high school looks.
We filled the position just a little over a month ago, and we've received a lot of very positive comments from staff noticing the difference almost immediately once we had that extra person in there.
What were we spending on overtime?
I don't have that off the top of my head. It's hard, it was a lot.
More than we wanted to?
Well, I'm sure, but does it total, it totaled 60 grand?
Oh.
No, 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 that's not all, that one position.
No.
I know, I'm just...
No, that's also salary increases and...
But I would just be curious to know what we were spending on overtime.
On, in terms of the entire?
No, just high school in particular, in terms of justification. Right, the plays and... Right. And the, you know, the offset that that...
Obviously, that, I mean, the high school is where we spend the majority of our overtime.
Yeah.
I mean, we spend overtime in all of our buildings, honestly, during sports season because all the buildings are being used, but clearly, the high school is, receives the brunt.
Okay, thank you.
But I will find that out.
And is that Wednesday-through-Sunday full-time?
Yes.
Yes.
What's the shift hours, Steve?
On Saturday and Sunday, he's here from 10:00 to 6:00. And Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, he's working an evening shift, 2:30 to 10:30. Summertime, he'll come on, he'll come, he'll do Monday through Friday summertime to work with the rest of the crew.
Thank you.
Equipment purchase, we're looking to upgrade some of the custodial equipment, in particular, the high school and the middle school. Some of that equipment's getting to be about 15 years old and needing to be replaced. Contracted services, a lot of that increases here at the high school. We had a really tough year here at the high school with equipment breaking down. Again, it's been 15 years since the renovation. Seemed like we had several different pieces of equipment in the kitchen fail on us. We had a fairly big repair on the elevator at one point. We had a piece of mechanical equipment just recently fail that supplied for share to the locker room, so we had to fix that pretty quickly. So it's been...
Good expenditure.
There's been, there's been a number of things that, you know, equipment at 15 years old is starting to show its age a little bit. Grounds, you actually see a little bit of a decrease there. And you'll see that I've shifted some of that into a different portion of my budget. We used to pay a contractor to come in and mow our athletic fields, and we now share a position with the Parks Department that takes care of those duties. And it's actually been less expensive for us that way, and we're getting more and better work out of that arrangement. It's worked out really great for both of us, I think. Service contracts is staying the same, it's a list of those on the back page of this report. And others, just the miscellaneous stuff, training, uniforms for staff, and a few other things. Contingency, we, two years ago, we had a contingency in the budget. Last year, we had to take it out, and because of the things I just mentioned, probably equipment breaking down, we kind of missed it this year. So we're trying to get that back in for next year. Following page is one, I think I show it for each other year. This is our electricity usage district-wide, going back to since I started keeping track of it. Substantial decrease because of all the projects we've done over the year. That amounts to about a 45% decrease in our electricity usage over that time. And, you know, I think I always tell you that we've gotten all the low-hanging fruit, and it's going to be hard to do any further, but with the advances in LED lighting technology now, there's a lot of opportunity in this building in particular to upgrade the lights. If we're, well, to make some investments in it and bring this down even further, believe it or not, so.
And I also want to say that I think that, I really want to give credit to Steve because I think that, over the years, taking part in all of the energy management projects that we've been able to have, that's one of the reasons why we see decreases here. And participating in those projects has made a huge difference overall.
Following page starts to get into a lot of the details of the budget and usually, you know, these different areas. System-wide maintenance of the plant. See a little bit of increase in the salaries there. Supply of material increase that I talked about. This is where I moved the, some funds from other areas in for the grounds, for the labor, for that shared position. And the contingencies in here. So that's why you see, actually, substantial increase in that section of the budget. On that page. HBAC, system-wide, again, a little salary increase. This is our HVAC technician who is also our maintenance foreman, or head of maintenance is actually the title. Contracted services, a little bit of an increase in supplies. We used to have training in the budget a few years back that had come out, but want to get that back in. Might be used for the HVAC technician, it might be useful for the other maintenance guys as well, depending on what comes up, what opportunities for training comes up over the year, over the coming year. Next, we get to the high school. This is where you see the increase of the one FTE. On top of the 1.5% contractual increase for the salaries there. You see a little bit of a decrease in the electric line, the gas line. Everything on the top section pretty much stays the same. Down the bottom half, you see where I've taken some of the grounds money that went into the system-wide maintenance of plant for the grounds guy that worked at the Parks Department. So overall, at the high school, we're looking at approximately a $25,000 increase. At the middle school, nothing really too substantial here, a little, again, a little decrease in electric and gas lines. Bit of an increase on the equipment purchase, again, we've got some old equipment there that needs to be replaced. And again, the grounds moved some of those funds out of grounds in this section of the budget into the other. And overall, about a $6,000 decrease at Knock. Mullen, this is basically one custodian for the Mullen School. And a little addition of $2,500 for equipment purchase to upgrade, update some of his things. Overall, just a small increase there.
Steve, may I ask you about the disparity in custodial count between just Knock and Mullen? Knock has four custodians, Mullen has one, do they, do they share that, or?
They, you know, they all sort of work together anyway. I mean, they're all mixed in. But the Mullen custodian is assigned specifically to the 16 Mullen classrooms. The, of the four Knock custodians, two of them are on during the day, and they really service the entire building during the day. And then the other two are nighttime, and they, their specific assignments are Knock classrooms. They work as a team, it's just the way in the budget we've...
How many classrooms are in Knock?
There are, well, there's 66 total classrooms in the building, so...
So they have 40 out of the 66?
See, again, it's, some of the classrooms are shared.
They share spaces, yeah.
You know, like the shared...
No, I understand that, I'm just trying to, it seems like there's a big difference.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's really no good clean way to split that building between Knock and Mullen because it's, you know, they're, they're in common spaces together.
Okay, so you're just holding those positions in the Knock budget?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Does the Mullen person not get a uniform?
No, he does.
They're in real trouble over there.
That's in the, that's in the Knock.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't see any uniform, I'm afraid, you know.
And then Bresnahan, again, nothing too remarkable here, change-wise. Bresnahan's all very similar all the way down the line, and just a $1,500 increase over... Bresnahan's all very similar all the way down the line, and just a $1,500 increase overall at Bresnahan. And the last page is just a listing of the service contracts that we have throughout the year. So that is the budget. Any questions about that?
What do you pay the fire alarm testing to do? Who does that?
Alarm testing is done by a contractor, BB Alarms. And they provide reports to both us and the fire department.
Okay. I wanted to be sure we weren't paying the fire department to do this.
I do, I think it's important, though, to point out the number of things that we are required to have inspected and the number of things that we are required to have checked on an annual basis, so there's no getting around these things. If we want to operate, these are things that have to happen.
All right, any more questions on the budget, or shall we move on to the capital plan? The capital plan is very similar to last year. A few things that came off of it this year. High school, high school security project was completed last fall, so that came off. The upgrades in the auditorium have come out because the NEF has taken care of that. Those are, will be completed this summer when we finish up the rigging.
And could you just tell me the total of the NEF?
Hi, Ken. $358,000.
I'd say 350,000.
When all is said and done, when they complete the rigging.
And is that over three years?
That's over...
Is that what they did, Mr. Decanter?
That's what we're shooting for, but they will actually complete, they think we will complete it a little early.
Excellent.
That's great. Wow.
They've moved up some of the things that...
They never cease to amaze.
Yeah, amazing group.
I know, I know.
So, starting at the beginning here, I think you're all familiar with the condition of the NOC parking lot.
Very familiar.
You do that. It's a tough shape. It hasn't been redone since I've been here for 15 years, so I don't, I couldn't tell you when the last time that was done. Sidewalks over there, in some cases, are in similar condition to the parking lot. So...
Steve, which ones? I thought we had done some of the sidewalks.
Well, a lot of it's, I count as a sidewalk, the fire road around the back of the school is in pretty rough shape. The skate park. Along the front of the school, that sidewalk is, was not redone. There's been, there's been sections redone here and there over the years, but the whole walkway from Summit Place down to the school, there's been a couple patches done to that, but that whole thing is kind of rough.
We had the new handicap entrance put in, in that section, and then we did have that pad that's outside of the entrance to my office, that was replaced. And then there were some sections...
Pieces here and there that were done.
That were done, but not everything.
May I ask about the lighting in that parking lot?
That's the one thing that I've added this year. It's actually the last page, number 27. And my suggestion would be that that gets done in conjunction with the paving of the parking lot, because if we're going to have to put in some new conduits underneath to add lights, then we don't want to do that after we pave the parking.
But Steve, we need, some pieces of that were part of the school building project, the lighting.
Yes.
Where are, what happened?
The, the lighting was replaced, the existing lighting that was there was just replaced, one for one. You know, they put a fixture back where there was a fixture before. And the new fixtures don't have enough spread to the light. They're more energy efficient, but they don't cast probably as much light as the old ones did, so there would need to be more to cover the same amount of area.
Or change the bulbs out of those.
Well, they're LEDs.
Okay.
So they don't, you know, possibly you can get different heads to put on them. I've talked to GGD, the engineer who did that project, and...
But they did what they were supposed to do under the contract?
They did. He didn't think that replacing the heads was going to give us enough to really sufficiently light the parking lot.
Would you talk to the city electrician?
Sure.
Because he's gotten very, very skilled in terms of, obviously, lighting and everything because we're about to change out all of the city's streetlights to LEDs.
Okay.
So I just, it'd be worth having a conversation, just, you know, send me back an email about what he says about those lights.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Project 004, tennis courts. Surface has been patched over the years. It's in kind of rough shape, the fencing around it. It's old and twisted.
Used it for parking when we had. The high school was moved to the NOC, they were using it for parking.
So it's, it's in rough shape. It still gets used. We put the nets up every year and community members come, community members come and play there, but kind of rough. 005 is kind of just a place saver for now. Those, the gym and auditorium roofs are the last sections of roof on that building that have not been replaced this century. They were last replaced in 1995. They are actually still in pretty good shape, but I just want to get them on the plan as something to keep in mind for the future. The NOC elevator modernization is probably one of, if not our highest priority. Elevator was originally built in 1972 and just needs to be updated. The elevator inspector has made comments along those lines that we need to really start to think about getting that done soon.
So this isn't a complete replacement? This is just parts?
It's an upgrade to what's there. Yeah, this is not building a new...
For $140,000.
That was a number that I got from, a budget number that I got from Embry Elevator. And really, until we, you know, we would have to hire a, an engineer to design the upgrades, and, you know, at that point, we'd be able to get a better idea of what the cost would be.
I mean, I, I think I know where you're going on this. I think it's worth it to at least find out. I mean, even if we upgrade it, we're going to, with a 40-year-old elevator system, we're going to continue to have to upgrade it on a regular basis.
Well, the other thing to consider, too, is that that cab is very small. It's not, it does not meet, the size does not meet wheelchair accessibility codes, so, you know, how much more would it be to expand the box? You know, it's, it would be an interesting project undertake in the existing space, but, you know, it's something we need to look at.
But by law, with this current structure, we're covered for students who may need assists?
Because it's existing, yes.
So even though you're... I'm sorry. I just, so a wheelchair fits in there with another person?
They use it, yes.
With $140,000 in estimated cost, wouldn't that put you over the $50,000 threshold for having to bring it up to code, under the ADA?
I'd have to look into that approach and see if that's, if that's in fact the case.
I'm pretty sure there's a $50,000 threshold in the ADA, that if you make $50,000 worth of renovations, you've got to bring it up to code. So you might want to check that.
Next one is just, actually, this is kind of a duplicate of what I was speaking of in the budget, upgrading some equipment at the middle school. NOC furniture replacement, we were able to replace some of the furniture as part of the renovation project, but there's still a lot of old, kind of hand-me-down furniture in there that we need to look at replacing at some point. It's not a, not a huge high priority, but something that we need to think about. High school roof. As you know, I was here a couple months ago, and we spoke about submitting a statement of interest to the MSBA to get into their accelerated repair program. That statement of interest was submitted, and we actually heard from the MSBA today to schedule a site visit, to come out and do their due diligence to see what condition our roof is in, and, you know, look at the building in general. I think the email actually was very clear that this is not a promise of anything. It's just doing their due diligence, but at least they're looking at it. That's one step in the right direction.
I was really impressed with the speed at which they moved on this. They talk about, you know, an accelerated approach. Well, I mean, we heard from them, they're meeting, they're coming on site next week. So it's, I mean, they're, they're very serious about it. I had two phone conversations with them today, and, you know, I'm pretty optimistic based on my conversation today that we're moving in the right direction, so we'll see.
The ceiling in the auditorium in particular, but also some of the walls, needs some plaster repairs. This would be something that we look at doing after the roofs get redone.
Is it something you can do in-house?
Maybe some of the wall repairs, yes. Ceiling repairs, accessing those, and the ceiling is actually a special acoustical plaster.
Right, right, okay.
And getting access up there would be a project that, you know, we could do in-house. I'm hearing woodwork project, you're familiar with that. I've been here a number of times speaking with that. CPA grant was submitted last month, and I am going before the CPC a week from tomorrow to present our case on that, so hopefully be successful this year in getting some funds from that source. One of the boilers at the high school, the interior brick, the fire brick inside is got a lean into the, into the fire area of the boiler. Needs to be fixed. We got to try and get quotes from a couple of different contractors that were within about, I think, $300 or $400 of each other. It needs to be done sooner rather than...
Unless it's something you can't do in-house either?
No.
Brickwork?
No. Plus, it's confined space work. It's a, it's a whole different task.
It's a good repair, though, to get it done.
It's, it's going to fall eventually, and when it does, that boiler won't be used again.
Yeah.
Fire alarm panel is, you know, we've been having trouble with that for years. It's now 15 years old. You know, so it's, it's reaching the end of its life, but we are unable to get parts to, to repair all of the issues that we've been having with it. So something that we need to look at, taken care of at some point. Masonry repairs. We've done a number of masonry repairs, particularly on the front of the building a few years The worst of what's left is our areas that are seldom seen by anybody. There are the terraces that are off each side of the building, the east and west sides. There are planters up there, and they just have never been right. We get, we get leaking through those planters into the mechanical space over here on the east side, and there's efflorescent staining. It's in rough shape, and, you know, we kind of question whether we even need those planters up there. They're just a maintenance issue. And, you know, some thought is that the best approach might be to just remove those and put a concrete, continue the concrete pad over there and just eliminate that problem Sidewalks, particularly the center sidewalk going down, the lawn is in pretty tough shape as are a few other areas. Get those fixed up and make them a little bit safer. Front sidewalk, we might be able to work into another project that we're, we're working on to kind of beautify that front area, so we'll see where we can go with that. Sidewalk extension. I've always just thought it funny, we have that sidewalk to nowhere full front, but just instead of continuing down around the corner of the building.
You know what the fuck you mean by nowhere?
Well, it's an accessibility.
It's accessibility issue.
And we've measured it, and we think that we can make it work. And if not, get a variance to allow a sidewalk to be installed there, because people walk it anyways, and it just, it just wears it, wears it out. We have a mechanical space that sits adjacent to a classroom here at the high school. Mechanical space doesn't have proper ventilation in it, so every now and then we get some odors drifting from the mechanical space into the, into that classroom. This is something that we might be able to work into the roofing project, because the main part of this is getting a penetration through the roof and a curb to put an exhaust fan on, so we'll look at at least getting part of that done as part of the roof project. Should help reduce that price. Stonewall around the perimeter of the grounds continues to get worse. We, we looked at last year, we looked at bringing a wittier masonry group up here, and they came up and looked at it and thought they might be able to take on a small portion of it, and they never came back after they looked at it.
They gave a real, real small portion.
I think it was, I think it was a little more extensive than what they were picturing when we first contacted them, and they said they just never came back.
Is there any, and this is just from my own edification, is there any kind of a masons union that does training that could, would take on a project like this in terms of...
I could look into it and see.
Sometimes, you know, that's a process to become a certified, and they will take on projects like that for significantly reduced costs as part of the training. So it just might be worth looking into to see if we can save some money there, and it's also, I like the idea of training some...
I've never thought of North Shore Tech or the new, whatever the new Essex Aggies call.
Uh, yeah, Essex Aggie, uh, there's Lynn Tech, it's modular.
It's a, it's a new North Shore Tech, because there's a mason.
Do they have masonry programs?
Yeah, and matter of fact, I know the guy that runs it, so...
Well, we can reach out to them, too. If you drive through the parking lot here during the day, you'll see cars parked kind of everywhere. You know, we're destroying the lawn out there. The edges of the parking lot driveway are crumbling more and more each year.
Just an observation I would make is that that is, that is not unique to the high school. We have a parking lot at NOC Mullen. We have many, many parking spaces there, and I continue to see people who park on the grass, who park in the handicap area, who park in the fire lane. So that's a, that's a problem that we have at all of our schools, so it's not unique just to, to the high school.
But parking, parking is very limited here.
It's true.
This one actually has not become the problem yet that I expected it would a couple of years ago when I first put this on the plan. Had to replace the ramp on the western side of the main entrance because it had deteriorated. We sort of expected that the other ramp on the eastern side would do the same thing and it has not to this point, so maybe it doesn't have the drainage issues that the other one did. You know, we'll continue to monitor it for a couple more years and see what happens, but we might be able to take that one. High school furniture, it's 15 years old. You know, so we're getting to the point where we're gonna have to start looking at replacing some of it. So just sort of a, you know, it's on here as a low priority, but something to, to keep in mind.
Anything for this room, replacing any of this furniture?
If I am so instructed, absolutely.
We're so sitting comfortably in. We're moving, we'll, we'll, never mind.
Been moving for...
I know, for three years we've been moving. But every space we wanted previously, we were, it didn't work, so. Springs Eternal.
Many of the carpets throughout the high school are from 15 years ago when the renovation was done.
Oh, mine are like 60 years at City Hall, what's the big deal?
We'd like to not go that long. If we start talking about it now...
Could take some of the old carpets from here and bring them down to the City Hall.
They'll be bringing them up. Well, didn't we switch equipment with the City Hall, so Tony?
I realize I should have updated this wording on this, where it says that we're looking to replace a 15-year-old van that probably will not pass inspection later this year. It should have been, looking to replace a van that did not pass inspection last year. So we're currently working with three maintenance guys with only two vehicles. And I think that adding another vehicle with a plow would be extremely useful to help keep the school lots clean, give the DPW a little extra hand following around the schools.
Have you looked at a lease purchase option, which is how we got the other van?
I have not.
It would be helpful if you could look at that before we make a final decision about...
Which department did that?
Yeah, we did it with Andy for when we found out that there were like 15 kids climbing into a car to drive out to West Newbury for baseball. And when we had lost, the rest was under construction, so we did a lease purchase for one of the white vans that shared between youth services and the schools. And we also do it with a lease to purchase for our cruisers. And so it's like, for the van, I think it was 8,000 or 8,500 over three years and then we owned it. So, I mean, granted, this is more involved than that because it's a truck and a plow, but it still might be worth looking at and looking at the state bid list to see if we can get something that's, because this sounds like a really high priority. And we, we went through the capital plans today, so I'm not, I just would like you to look at some other options for that first.
Okay.
But soon, so that, because we're making a decision like next week on the capital.
Who, who can I talk to that, that worked on a lease purchase?
Andy did.
Andy did it?
But you could also talk to Ethan or Patty.
Okay. High school ground floor vestibules. If you've ever come to a basketball game at night here in the middle of the winter and been in that hallway outside the gym, when those doors open at either end of the gym, it's like a wind tunnel, sucking cold air into the building. It's extremely energy inefficient and very uncomfortable in that hallway. So this is, this is just looking at creating kind of an airlock at both ends of the hallway down there to kind of improve our efficiency and make it more comfortable down there.
Have you looked at the possibility, I mean, I don't know if this would work, but I know that a lot of the restaurants downtown have put those plastic curtains outside, so when you open the first set of doors, you have some protection behind you so you don't get the cold air going in. I don't know if you've looked at those as an option?
Angie's has them.
The Reddys has them.
The Reddys has them, Angie's has them.
Yeah. Oregano's.
We might have more restrictions as a school.
I don't know, it's just, it might be something that you could do for a lot cheaper. And you put them up just in the winter and take them down.
I actually work at Angie's and we find that like what those currents do, especially in the winter, especially when you have people trying to shove in the door, it does cut down a lot in the wind and trying to get in, it's just a lot more.
And for those people sitting right there too.
It's very nice.
I don't, it just might be worth looking at that because it's something we could probably do right away as opposed to, you know, and 25,000 is a lot for this, so. As opposed to your truck.
And the last page is the, the lights in the Knock parking lot that we spoke of earlier. Questions on the capital plan?
Well, I can tell you right now, because our capital plan has to go to the city council by April 1st, so we're down to the last, you know, 10 days of our, or so of preparing this. We met today and what we, we know now that we are putting forward into the capital plan is the Knock parking lot paving, the elevator. That's why I'd like a little more information on new upgrades, that kind of thing, Steve, if you could get that to me sooner. The panel at the high school, fire panel is, is definite. And then we're looking at how we can work in the lighting piece with the paving for the parking lot. But we have a green community grant to do the streetlights in the city. I don't know if we can use a piece of that to help with the lighting too, but we're gonna look at ways at that. But that's what we definitely have said that we're putting forward, but would like more information. If there's anything else that, out of what I've said, that you think is a higher priority, let me know. And also, if you can get me more information about the truck. We might even talk to Tony too, you know, about what he's, because he's been finding some decent trucks for other departments that need them too at good prices.
How old is that truck right now, Steve, the one you have pictured? What year is that?
That one?
Yeah.
That's a picture of the new one.
Yeah, that, yeah, right, I remember when you got it.
Oh, so that, that, the price I got was from last year.
Okay, but how old is, what year is the truck? That's what the question was.
That was a new truck.
Okay, so 2000...
The truck that you didn't pass inspection with?
No, 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 the truck, the new truck with the plow. Because you're looking to get another plow truck, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you have two of them?
We have two.
Okay, now, can I just say, and I don't mean to be controversial, but do people take these home on weekends or nights at all, these trucks?
One of them, yes, the other ones, no. So I've got, I've, the only one that goes home is a guy who lives 10 minutes away in Newbury.
Okay. Thank you.
And we're sure he's not plowing with it.
We, he has his own plow truck. He is, he is very, no, I, I understand, he is very conscientious about not doing anything personal in that truck.
Okay, thank you.
And I do want to say that the coordination between our staff and the city is terrific in terms of particularly snow events and who's doing what and it's, it works well.
Seems like with the parks too.
Yes.
Thank you, it's always a pleasure that when you come to see us, you save money. We, we like your presentation every year. Do you want to say something?
Do the tennis team still practice at the tennis courts down the Knock?
I think they're at Atkins.
And do you think it's really worth spending 50,000 fixing up something people don't really use? Because it was taken over by skateboarders, I know, a couple, like a while back and there was big controversy on that.
Right, that's when we were doing the construction, had to shut down the skate park and so we let them use that site temporarily.
There are still community members that use it. Not many, but we do, we do see people who are, who are there, so.
Good question though.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Moving on in our agenda, as you know, we had a city budget workshop on Saturday, January 28th, at the Senior Community Center. And we gained some useful information from that meeting and we have notes now that have been collated, so I'm gonna ask the, the people who either chaired the meeting or took the notes or typed up the notes, Mr. Hochheiser, to give us just a brief overview of what happened at your, during your group. Mr. Menon, you led group one, I believe?
Sure, yeah, we didn't, we didn't organize our dialogue around strengths and challenges, but more the kinds of things people were interested in. And our group felt there was a really strong interest in restoring a robust world language program to the public school system. We talked about funding full-day kindergarten and we thought that was a really worthwhile goal, but not an immediate one. There was a strong desire to continue the later start time dialogue. There was a strong expression of support for moving beyond a level services approach to the budget. And there was a strong consensus that the district and the school committee could do a better job in forming the public and communicating. We brainstormed a couple of solutions, reallocate savings that might accrue at the high school from offering a single language to the elementary schools to begin a world language program there. Look at limiting school busing to the state mandate, reallocate those funds back to the schools. Continue to analyze whether shifting insurance to the GEC will accrue, GIC will accrue savings. There needed to be ongoing Chapter 70 advocacy. Focus on, somebody had suggested we focus on creating and implementing mixed-use commercial zoning. And meet with the Mass Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority to find out if it's possible to integrate some of their buses into, into our students' use. That was what we talked about.
Any questions from that group one interaction? Or any comments, anybody want to add anything? Angela, you sent in on that group, are you, anything you wanted?
Yeah, I think we covered it well.
Okay, great. Group two, I think, was, Mr. Hochheiser was responsible for reviewing those notes, I believe. Councilman Cameron ran that meeting. Thank you, Mr. Hochheiser.
I don't know if you guys want me to read this whole thing to you, but...
No, no.
Yeah, yeah. Right. You know, the strengths are the people who work in the schools and the schools themselves and the community that supports the schools. You know, the first-rate buildings and whatnot, the professionals of the buildings and the people like the PTO, the NEF, the school committee and city council who everyone was in unanimous agreement worked really hard to get what's best for the schools. I had a couple of city councils on the, on the committee, but everyone there seemed to feel like the city council was really working with the schools in mind, so that was nice to see. People wanted just the highlights, the better balanced curriculum, so essentially meaning that more things for more kids. They seem to think that there's a type of kid, high achieving, college-bound student for whom a lot of the program seemed to go towards. And so they wanted a more diverse operating, offering, more connections with the community colleges, more literacy and visual arts instead of, there's a lot of talk about STEM, but people in the group wanted more arts to go along with that. The logistics came up a lot, like how are we structuring what we do in the day, the calendars, the start times. There were a lot of people talking about the amount of, or the lack of recess, rushed lunches. Mixed age classrooms came up from a couple people.
Encouraging that?
Encouraging that, very much so. Just as part of the social emotional learning to recognize that all kids aren't as linear as we'd like to think they are. And a mixed age classroom is, is a way for kids to get grade-level curriculum without having to go at a particular pace. You know, and along that theme, expand the current flexible day offerings at the high school. Less testing, more, nobody was against assessment, but they wanted it to be more creative, hands-on work than sitting down for a test. Everyone's worried about the funding stream. The funding stream, everyone's very worried about, you know, just the fact that each year seems to be such a struggle. And I think people understood that the government funding is going to be a bigger struggle this year than it has been. And people wanted better communication and collaboration, both with, let's just say, the Volk schools and the charter schools, connections to the businesses and, well, us are sort of the same, like a feedback loop and a dialogue that goes back and forth between all stakeholders. So it's not just us pushing out information or, we've heard this a couple times, people coming to school committee meetings, speaking at us and then going to sit down, like they wanted conversation. There were a number of people there who didn't understand and who, you know, were talking to the fact that it's hard to understand how to get conversation about the schools with people who make decisions. Because it always seems to be like sending an email or whatnot, but there's not even a community dialogue.
Thank you. Anybody have anything to offer?
Because I was part of that group, but I don't know if you can call this David, but one of the things that I really talked about when I heard these things about needing more time for lunch and the communication listed on the last two points under four, was just really a need to have kind of an ad hoc committee on student supports across the board. Because I don't think it's, I think it's a discussion that has to happen, I think. If we want to listen to parents, we want to listen to students, we need some type of committee to look at, you know, you know, what do we need? What do the students need? And, and so there's a number of things under the second bullet point, under logistics, that I would classify into that. And I, I said it several times during the, the meeting and it didn't get written down as such, and that's fine, but I just think that looking at toward having some type of ad hoc committee would be useful, you know, to include student supports.
And that is part of the strategic plan. So that kind of fits nicely into that whole thought.
Can I just add one point? I happen to be at a shoreline superintendent's meeting on Friday along with Angela and one of the superintendents who was there was talking about, and I'm going to gather more information, but he has recently negotiated, which I thought it's the first time I've heard of it, with his elementary schools, so that all three schools, elementary, middle and high are all 990. And that's pretty unusual and the, you know, a lot of bells and whistles went off when I heard that. Because it, while there's obviously costs associated with it, there also are some huge perks that go along with that in terms of extended time during the day for your elementary students in terms of having, you, you have the potential to have all of your teachers on the same type of schedule.
Common planning.
Common planning time, there's just a whole, so I touched base with him prior to the end of the meeting and we have a phone conversation later this week, so I'm looking to get some more information, but it was a really interesting idea to me, so I will...
What district is that?
Um, he's, he's moving to Stonem, Winthrop, yes, Winthrop, Winthrop.
Interesting.
So I'm, I'm excited about that.
I always thought it was interesting that those are the hours for the students, not necessarily the teachers. I don't know why, even in my, I work at a K building and for some reason my elementary teachers leave before the middle school teachers. Like, it's just a thing that we've attached teacher hours to student contact hours.
Well, we have separate contracts for our teachers' hours to come and go outside the, the student hours.
I'm, I'm just saying, but like, if the, the, the school day is longer at a high school, I don't know why the elementary, they're on the same contract, on the same pace, I don't know why they have a shorter day. Just never, I never understood that.
Well, it's, we're gonna, I'm gonna be doing a little research, so.
Great. I'll be happy to let you know. Thank you. Group three, Christine?
Yeah, so, and I will go from this group, you can chime in if there's anything I missed. In terms of the strengths of the schools, I would say that most of the parents had called out the teachers as one of the key strengths. They also called out the Knock Middle School as a really good example of a school that was working well because of the team teaching model and most of the parents said that there were just excellent communication with the parents and it set that school apart from the others. Continuity, the recent continuity in leadership was a strength, community support from the PTO and NEF, as well as academics, but the academics was debated strongly in our group because while it's a strength, I think there was a discussion about whether, you know, what happened to the kids that don't excel in academics and are there things in place for them in Newburyport? And then the new buildings were a huge strength. In terms of the needs, during the forum, we had initially broken it down into budgetary needs versus kind of more intangible needs. And so I'd say on the non-budgetary side, communication, communication with the community at large, communication from some of the specific schools with parents were called out as a need. We spent a lot of time talking about librarians, which I know we've heard about here, and parents feeling strongly that they wanted to see more library positions, specifically not media specialists, but library positions. We also talked about having a sped transition coordinator for post-grad students and students transitioning between grades. And, sorry, I realize I drifted into some of the budgetary needs. Having a stable budget was, you know, one of the top priorities and really the top priority for everyone in making everything else work. Time for Lunch and Movement came up in our group. And then in terms of the budgetary needs, like I said, librarians, the sped transition coordinator, later start times came up, world language program and increases in music and art offerings along with more classroom resources for classrooms with more diverse challenges, so more aides and paraprofessionals in the classrooms. That was most of it.
May I ask you, was music and art to increase the offerings, to broaden the offerings, to...
Yeah, I think it was actually, Nick can chime in here, it was an interesting discussion for me because we spent a lot of our initial time when we were talking about needs on talking about things like the library and the, you know, some of these other kind of smaller needs. And then Charlie Taunter was in our group and he said, "I'm surprised we're not talking about like languages and music and arts." And all the parents still said, "Of course we, of course we want those."
I think there was, I would like to color that, that discussion was colored somewhat by Charlie's recollection of his experience as a parent, which happened a few years back. And obviously there were a lot of changes that have gone on in our curriculum and how we, how we teach some of these programs today. But I think the overall concern the parents had is, especially at the elementary level, is are we giving the school day? Are we taking enough time to be able to do things like go to the library? And that while they, while we did try and push back and say, hey, it's, yes, it's library and it is what you think of as library, but it's often called the media center and you have a media specialist who fulfills the role at the librarian and in fact she's a librarian plus, not just a librarian. And we talked about, you know, the degree now in library sciences is masters in library sciences and information, library and sciences.
Yeah.
So information's in there and so, there was a little bit of misunderstanding, I think the overall gut feel was some of the things that they associated with their own education would like to see their kids' education associated with were not happening in the same way. Music certainly was a part of it, you know. My child never goes down to the library just to borrow a book. Yeah, they do.
With that here.
Yeah. But, so that, I think that was interesting and the music and art was, are we getting enough time on these subjects in the right setting with our students today?
So that kind of came out of two groups, right? Don't leave the A out of STEM, basically. Thank you. What do we do with this information now? I guess I want to turn to the superintendent. Have you had the opportunity to share this with the leadership team or what does this mean to us now, I guess, as a school district? This information?
I have not shared this specifically and cannot do it until, not our meeting this week, but the meeting after that because we have prescribeded time, but we'll share that with, I've had individual conversations with some of the principals about some of the feedback and we generally talked about, I mean, I gave an overview, but we haven't shared this document with them.
Because they weren't there, right? They didn't go to that.
Christine Gentile was...
Right, 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 okay. So just to communicate that, since we did have a whole, you know, city and devoted that whole morning to that, I think it's important, Mr. DeCantor.
I came away after, after listening to the presentations of the four groups, and the impression that I had was, and it didn't surprise me at the end of the day, is how close the overall themes tied into our strategic plan.
Our priorities.
I'm sorry?
And our priorities.
And our priorities. I think there is a continuity in there. I don't know that there is solutions to all of the issues that we've identified and identified as priorities and want to keep working on, but there was consistency. It wasn't like we had the strategic plan that said new curriculum and we said foreign language is an old curriculum and the parents in this, or the citizens in this group said swimming pool. It wasn't that kind of a disconnect. I think we were all, we're all together and have our, I think the direction in which we're heading is consistent. And so I came away feeling encouraged by that, but as we all know, the devil's in the details.
Right, but I would agree with you. That's why, you know, when we talk about these things, it is, they are aligned to what the work we eventually want to do with the strategic plan. So I see that as all a good thing, it's cohesive. So, thank you for those of you who took notes and ran groups.
Point, I think some of that could be the light attendance and that it seemed to me that the people who were there all knew each other and we knew most of them. There weren't a lot of first timers, newcomers. I mean, we cut down to half the amount of groups we were hoping to have to start. And that's all, it just seemed to me like, in our group, there was a couple of us, a couple of city councillors, you know, a couple of people in the start times committee, it was, it was, it was a lot of, it was a lot of the same voices. So not that I'm saying it's bad that we came out with a lot of the same things in line with the strategic plan, but it didn't surprise me when we started the meeting because, I just think...
One of the things that I was pleased with, there were a couple of people there who I had an opportunity just in chatting with them prior to actually the start of the meeting, who came because they were interested and had no children in the school district, which I thought was a really, from my perspective, was a really positive message.
Oh, that is good.
Because they were interested in hearing about what the priorities were and, you know, one of them said to me, you know, "My, my kids are gone from the school district, but I will always have an interest in what the schools are doing." And so that to me was a, was a positive. So I do think we had a, you know, a broader range. I agree with you, I would have loved to have seen a lot more people there, but I think for the first time in doing something like that, I wasn't unhappy with the turnout, just from, that's my, my perspective, so.
And if I can add to that too, I think that in the group that Bruce and I were in, there were a couple of people who were very pleased with broadening their scope of information about the schools. You know, they had come to the, to the budget forum with a limited perspective and a limited amount of information and as the dialogue emerged, you know, there was a lot of, "I had no idea that that's how that worked," or "That's good to know that all those things are involved." So I think from that perspective, it would be good in the future if people are considering attending a forum like this, that it's also just a way to get to know the schools better and to understand how decisions are made and the things that are involved in making decisions.
And I think, Angela, the other piece of that is, you know, having us report out and then asking what will happen with the information and how it impacts. And so that's why I'd like that loop closed a little bit after you have, you know, your conversation, because I think if people are going to come out for a whole morning like that, they need to understand that the information's going somewhere, so.
Do we talk to the teachers with these questions? Do, like, do we ever get a document from the, not about from the union, that's not the right word, but from the teachers saying, this is what they think our strengths are, this is where they'd like to see our...
I mean, during the budget development process, they're each, all the grade level teams are, you know, meeting with building principals in terms of their priorities. So that conversation has, we have larger conversations regarding curricular issues.
Through the strategic planning process, and even when the PLCs started this year, their reflections in the PLCs were, had questions like that, but specifically as it relates to the particular topic of their PLC. But these questions, these overarching questions about our school district, you know, what are our strengths, what are our needs, I wouldn't say that recently we've asked that question that since strategic, since we started the strategic planning process, when we were doing that, that was a big part of our conversation, but not this year.
Angela, can you define PLC for the...
I sure can. A professional learning community, a small group of, of teachers who work together focused on a particular topic.
That they chose, so that again, I think links to what the groups of teachers feel is important, a thing to look into, because we've got tremendously broad topics in all of those.
They do.
So I think that's determined by strengths and weaknesses of, you know, our, our school district. So in a roundabout way, maybe we haven't asked the question, but I think in a lot of ways, we have the answer with, with the PLCs.
Okay.
I, all right, let's move on, superintendent's report.
Okay. I wanted to talk just, just a little bit about, let me just start with the crossing guards and this is informational for you. We're really, we're challenged right now with having had some illness among some of our crossing guards and not being able to find replacements for them for the first time since I've been here. We actually are advertising in the newspaper to see if we can't find substitutes because it's been really difficult. And, you know, I mean, there are some streaks in Newburyport that are challenging, particularly in the morning, to get across without crossing guards present. So the other thing that I'm doing, and this came out of a conversation with a couple of parents regarding this topic, and I, I didn't necessarily know that our crossing guards weren't there, because it gets reported at the building level and it wasn't necessarily getting to my level until I had a couple of phone calls from parents. So I had some dialogue with them. One of the things that I'm in the process of compiling right now is the number of students who actually walk to our buildings and, which is a little, it's interesting to try to tease that out because some parents drop their kids off and actually drive them to school, so it's a little difficult to tease out who's a walker and who's somebody who gets a ride from parents or a family member, but I'm in the process of compiling that right now. And what I'm going to do is to reach out to those parents of students who are walkers and I'm going to ask that if we put together some type of a blackboard message so that when I know there is going to be a crossing guard out, that I could reach out to that particular group of parents and say, is there anybody who can assist and could we get some people to be trained to fill in? So we'll see how that goes, but it's been very, very challenging. We have advertised at the senior center, we have put it on school springs, so, and that has not yielded any, any folks who are willing to be substitutes, so now we are actually advertising in the newspaper. So I wanted to just make you aware of that in case you hear anything or in case you have any questions about that.
Is there a temp agency in town?
I'm sorry?
Temp agency? Do those things still even exist?
I don't know the answer to that.
It used to be, I'm not sure if there still is.
But the, the ad is going to be running tomorrow, Thursday and Saturday, and it comes also with a seven day job posting online at monster.com. So, and it's costing us $143. So I just wanted to let you know that. But we're a little desperate in this case, just because we've had some, some longer term illnesses that we had planned on, but that is probably one of the most difficult positions that we have to, to fill every year. And it's typically, we have our retired, it's, it's folks from the retired community who are the ones who fill that. We do a training over the summer. Megan Tierney, our school resource officer is one of the, she helps with the training. We provide equipment for them, including reflective clothing, weather gear, and Megan has been kind enough when we've hired during the year to also do any training for our new personnel as well. But I will keep you posted on that. But it is a challenging, but, and I'll also let you know how it goes with if I get any response from parents or not. Second thing I just wanted to make you aware of is that I had a call from a gentleman named Mark Fugier from Fugier Planning and Development. And he called me to say he'd like to meet with me. He is a consultant on the Waterside West project and he said, "I know there's always concerns whenever there's any type of a new project as to what the impact on the schools will be, particularly in our case where our buildings are quite, quite full." And this is a, approximately a 200 condo project with, you know, retail and a variety of other things that are going in there. But what he shared with me and the data that I shared with you is just that it looks like there would be very limited impact on the schools, that typically the higher end, more expensive condos that you see, which include the townhouses and those with three bedrooms, those are limited in number. And again, these are quite expensive, so I'm not sure that families are going to be the ones that are going to be looking to be on the waterfront and are going to be looking to do this, some will. But, so, I, after talking with him, I was much less concerned, but I did want to share the data with you so that you had it. And again, we need to be looking at any growth within the city and how that will impact the schools over time. So I was appreciative that Mark had reached out to me and wanted to make you aware of that as well. I said to him, you know, if there are any changes in the schools, I certainly would be in touch, and he said if there was any changes in the project, he would also be in touch, so. But just wanted to make you aware of that. And then the last thing that I would like to make you aware of is our food service. And we've had some requests and actually put through, because we needed to, some equipment for food service at the high school. And this involved a steam boiler that was completely basically shot to the tune of almost $8,000. And the labor that goes along with that to install it is another 12, so we have a steam boiler that is going to cost about $9,200.
Does this have anything to do with the repairs that Steve talked about?
It does not.
Okay.
No, that's a completely, that's a, that's a heating boiler, this is for, in the kitchen, this is for cooking.
Boiling for food.
Yes.
Maybe we could...
Here at the high school. And then secondly, the other thing that we needed to repair and actually replace here at the high school was an undercounter dishwasher that has gone, it's, it was kaput, and that is to the tune of $3,698. So two expenses that we had not anticipated, but that we need to have in order to continue to provide food service to our students at the high school, so those purchase orders have gone out. So again, this is where that sort of maintenance fund that Steve has in his building maintenance, the contingency piece that he has, this is exactly the kind of thing that we should have it for, so. But I did, just wanted to make you aware of that. And that's really it for me.
Can I ask you one other question?
Absolutely.
Could you give us an update on how the start school leader ad hoc group is going?
And both Shoreland...
That, yeah, we were going to do that on the...
That, yeah, we were going to do that on the, in the subcommittee portion of our...
So anyway, we can do it now, it's just not, it just isn't on the agenda as an item, so...
Okay, that's right, I just wanted an update.
Right, we were going to do that during subcommittee.
Okay.
Great. Thanks. Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Sure. I have a couple of things I wanted to talk to you about tonight. I'm going to start with the second one, I think. As you all know, we rescheduled our March 16th Staff Development Day, and I just wanted to talk to you about the process that we used to do that, so that everybody understands that we tried to be as thoughtful as possible about making that decision. But, you know, we didn't predict the weather, and we ended up having two days of weather where we needed to cancel school, and then the full Professional Development Day was scheduled for the 16th, which would have meant that our students would have been out of school three consecutive days, two due to weather, and then one because of the Staff Development Day. So we pulled our leadership team together, because on Wednesday, while the students were out for the snow day, all administrators worked on that day. And, and so we came together and we talked about the pros and cons of having the day or canceling the day, and, you know, the high school, as you heard from our student rep, is having MCAS this week. There were some events happening at the middle school where the, where the students were getting prepared for those events. And just, you know, all around, as our conversations went on, we just felt that it was in the best interest of the students if we were able to bring them into school and get them back in class. So it was, it was a big undertaking in a short period of time. We had 11 outside presenters that were coming in to present for that day. Of course, we didn't have cafeteria service set up, we didn't have buses set up, youth services had programs running, the Y had programs running. So there was a lot that we needed to just hustle, and I just have to thank everybody in the community that worked with us so cooperatively. The bus company was, let us just get right on this and make sure that we can make it happen. The Y, youth services, Sharon Seal with the cafeteria, everybody was just so cooperative in trying to pull it together. All of our presenters, I was able to reach out to all of the presenters, and we have about 90% of them that have agreed to come and duplicate the day on our November 7th day next year. So it was a really good day. I also want to thank the Professional Development Council, they had worked tirelessly to organize that day and did a lot of research on who would best meet the professional development needs of the staff and whatnot. So we also wanted them to feel that their time was appreciated and valued, and, and they seem to be in good shape too, knowing that it will happen next November. So, so I just wanted to fill you in on how that decision was made, and, you know, we really tried to consider all things in doing it.
And what was your feedback?
The immediate feedback was a little controversial at the beginning. We, we had some emails, families, some families had made plans, and so this really threw a wrench into their plans, which was understandable. Our most verbal group were high school students, and they, they were very disappointed, and they didn't hesitate to let us know that they were very disappointed, that they were expected to come to school.
I was still answering emails at 11:30 at night, that night, two students explaining the rationale behind it. I would just point out that I believe that they will all be happy when they realize that we have bought a day back now.
Right.
And for high school students and for all of our students across the distance. So while we've had four days out, we have now, we have actually made up one of the days by coming in that Thursday. So now we are looking at the 21st of June.
Right, as students last day.
As students last day.
And teachers last day, 22nd, 3rd?
23rd.
And it's Saturday, Friday?
Because the teachers will still make up the Professional Development Day. But we've been thinking about this, so as a leadership team, and we've had all of this work this year that we've been doing around the profession, in the professional learning communities, and so we're talking about being able to take advantage of the day as a way to culminate all of that work that these teams of teachers have done throughout the year. So I think that will be really valuable too.
And I also, I just want to add that in addition to that, it was very, it was short notice to staff, so teachers had planned a Professional Development Day, so our teacher assistants and our teachers had to now plan for lessons for the next day. Again, they may, you know, they probably were already planned, but they still had to make that happen really quickly, so it was, it was a really great effort across the board in a very short amount of time, and the day really came off without a hitch. There were very limited absences in our buildings. I will tell you a funny little story. Some of the students who were absent at Breznerhand, they were absent because they didn't realize that we were having school that day, some of the kids. So the number of parents who actually brought kids in, they actually brought kids in once they realized that there was school that day. So, so the phone...
Funny if they showed up to go sledding.
So, but, you know, the, our attendance was a little bit up, but it was not anywhere out of the realm of, so it was a good day overall.
And I think the overall feedback from the teachers was very positive about bringing the kids in. They were happy to have them, they hadn't, you know, had them for two days, and the feedback that I got from teachers was overwhelmingly, thanks, you know, thanks for letting us have the kids this day, because it wasn't that we didn't want the Professional Development Day, but it would have been a long time without seeing them, so. Yeah, good decision in the end.
It was. Thank you for all that work, it does.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And then the other thing I wanted to talk to you about is, as you know, this year we will be having the Next Generation MCAS test for the state, high stake testing. And they, you will have in your packets the memo that came from the Department of that about this, but I just wanted to summarize it for you. Because it is a new test, in an effort to create a new baseline for how you will do accountability levels for the various schools and school districts. This year, for any school district who is in a, rated in a level one through three, as you know, there's five current levels now that you, that schools accountability ratings range. Any school district that is in levels one through three will be non-rated at the end of this year, as they develop this new baseline, as long as you have a 90% participation rate. A minimum of a 90% participation rate is needed to avoid a rating this year. Any school who has below a 90% participation rate will automatically be put in a Level Three, which is a lower level than we've been in for several years. So participation is really important, I think they're really emphasizing participation this year, because when they do decide to issue a rating after 2017 and 2018 testing years, it'll be a culmination of the two. So they don't want to have 17 be skewed, because there's not going to be a rating attached in this particular school year. School districts who are in a Level Four or a Level Five will remain a Level Four or Five. They can, if they meet the requirements to move out of that level, they will, but they won't, and they won't be added in as Four and Fives during this period. So they can work out of a Four and Five, they won't be placed back in it, but they'll remain a Four and Five, until they're able to work their way out. High school, of course, will remain the same, because high school is taking the legacy test, the test has not changed for high school, and so neither will any of the accountability calculations. It'll all remain the same at the high school level. So I think, you know, the most, the most important part about this that you'll see that was emphasized at the end is that we really need to, you know, encourage the participation, because the accountability determination will include data from 1718. There is also a section in this memorandum that you'll see on the third page, which really highlights the state law around students being required, any student who is educated with public funds is still required to take the state testing. So it is part of the law, and that's in there, and I, I think that's important for us to emphasize if there's, you know, questions around, around this test. There is, this is a time for comments, so in the memorandum that you receive, you can go to any of the links here that are in the memorandum, and you can, you know, voice your opinion about this, because this is a comment period around this change.
And are we doing that as a district?
Commenting?
Are we commenting? I don't know, we haven't had that discussion as a district yet, as to whether we are.
Because I look at the, you know, the April 5th as the deadline for the discussion and your feedback, so I didn't know if you had some thoughts, you thought this was, this was fair, or you intend to give some feedback.
I think a lot of, a lot of districts are waiting to see what this new version is going to be like, so I think people are waiting to see.
So play it straight the first year and then...
So I think, you know, I mean, it's, it's one more version. You know, I've been here four years, this is the third version, basically, so, that I've experienced.
Welcome to Massachusetts.
So, you know, I mean...
I think they proposed changes in accountability reporting personally, to not try to implement that in this first couple of years. I mean, to at least gather and try to establish a new baseline makes perfect sense, because we went from the old MCAS to a year of PARK, and now we're going to the Next Generation MCAS. And so, you know, it's not very valid data if you try to use three different tests to determine accountability rating. So I think this makes sense, I think it would make sense to hold off for a couple of years before you do a determination. I mean, usually you would want three years of data before you feel you have valid data to make a determination, but at least this is a start. I think this is a move in the right direction on the department's part to say, until we, you know, know what the results are going to be.
Question, because when they went to PARK, they started with the accountability data, right, they had that transition formula.
Mm-hmm.
So hopefully, somebody's learned a lesson in that. So it's not really that they're all that smart, but they're just trying to play politics here. Has attendance always been a factor? Like last year, if it's, no, for the state testing?
Oh, for the state testing.
Right.
Well, I think, I don't think it's always been a factor, but I think it's become a factor when there was some of the transition between PARK, then there was a lot of, a lot of conversation about students opting out, and there were, there were people who were under the impression that that was a legitimate option. I mean, it certainly, a parent can always say, I'm not, you know, I refuse to have my child take the test. But I think the point that, that the state is trying to make in this memo is that it will be detrimental to the school and the district as a whole if you do so.
I was just under the impression that that's always been the case, that if we tested less, fewer than 90% of our kids, that that would be a problem. It just wasn't as explicit.
It'd be 95%.
Well, so I guess that was my next question, is it says here that we need to assess at least 90% of the students, put in that last thing. It says the U.S. Education Department requires action by states in cases where the participation drops below 95%. So Massachusetts can say 90%, but the feds say that Massachusetts has to do something if it's less than 95%. That's...
Wow. I think during this transition time, it's always been, generally when they've talked about participation rates, they're at 95%, you have to meet 95%. And I think they moved it to 90 during this transition period for whatever reason.
Test those federal orders.
I don't know. I, I know, David, it doesn't always make sense, but...
I'm assuming...
That's why I wondered if we were commenting or not.
I'm assuming we tend to do well during attendance.
We do, our participation rates, we rarely have issues with our participation rates. We had one year where we, where we were marked down on a participation rate, it was at the high school, and we were right on the cusp of meeting our number, and it was around students that were being home tutored for physical or mental illness, and they need to be tested. And it was a year that that hadn't happened, and so that counted against us in our participation rate. So we've been very careful since that time to ensure that just...
In the Bronx, we did testing in the afternoon, because if the kids didn't show up in the morning, I would get on the phone and call them. We'd send taxis, be like, get to school.
We do makeups though, right? We have scheduled makeups.
Oh, yeah, there's scheduled makeups, but when you have a student who's not in school...
No, I understand, but we catch most of it.
Yeah, definitely, we do. You know, we've got, you know, participation rates have not been a problem to date.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. I don't want to cut you off.
No. So please feel free to log on and comment, though, if you've got a...
Oh, sure. Is it anonymous?
I don't know.
Oh, yeah, to give me a social security number.
Fingerprint.
Right.
Let's take a look at, have we had any subcommittee meetings since our last meeting? Ponce?
Policy net. We continue to weed our way through Section J, which is all the student regulations, and it's a particularly challenging section, because there's so much in it, and it is also the one section in which, although we strive to have a single district-wide policy, adjustments need to be made for age appropriateness, much more than anywhere else, and so it's been a little bit challenging, but we are making good progress, and hopefully we can complete the work at our next meeting, April 1st.
Yeah, we met on March 8th, and we talked about a number of things, a couple of those I'm going to defer to the superintendent, but I'll let you know that we talked about the fact that the city is implementing a change in payroll providers, and effective April 7th, 2017, payroll will no longer be with pay dot data, paid data. Our new company will be Hopper's Payroll Services. The city feels with this payroll change, reporting services we need will be more specific to municipal and school payroll processing, and those will be better addressed. So we're given this memorandum that went out to all employees.
And can I just mention, Steve, on the cusp of that, because we talked about it a lot in negotiations about, we now have 100% participation in direct deposit.
Oh, good.
So that was something that we were looking forward to for cost savings, and I think we've attained that, so I just...
The other thing we're updated on was the work being done by Ethan Manning, Melissa Melnick, Nancy Lysick, Mark Abrahams, and Matt Abrahams on the bringing together of chart accounts, the chart accounts progress, where this group is working on a revised chart of accounts that will serve both the school department and the city for fiscal year 2018. This revised chart will especially help the city and school department when budgeting time comes around. We also went over some transfers, a number of these transfers are related to salaries, where certain salaries are being transferred from one department to another department in the high school, the Breznerhand School, the Mullen School, and the middle school. The salaries total about $108,000, actually $107,000. A lot of them were to address lane and degree movements, reclassification of staff, and funds to offset, is there something about subs in here? I guess not. Reclassification of staff and funds to offset some leave of absent costs. And then there were some expense adjustments related to textbooks and supplies, transportation for high school athletics, and all those added up to about $16,000. So in all, there was about $124,000 in transfers. And then I just wanted to defer to the superintendent, if you wanted to talk about budget freezes, any update on that?
Be happy to. So in order to move forward, as we did last year, we've currently placed a freeze on current budget purchases, and any, any of the encumbrances, where even funds that have been encumbered right now, we're asking that those get run through both... have been encumbered right now, we're asking that those get run through both Nancy and myself. And we're taking a very, a very tough line right now because we would like to be able to transfer money to offset some of the shortfall that we see for next year. So we're really taking a very hard look at that right now. We, we are capturing some of that money, we're in the process of doing that. And we are, you know, working on looking at our projections for next year as well as being able to move some of the funds that we'll be saving through the budget freeze and to move that into next year to offset any of the shortfall that we see, so.
Thank you. Curriculum Instruction and Expectations Committee?
Meet sex Monday. Meet sex Monday.
And then I just, we had our first later start times meeting, I believe it was last week, the 21st, March 21st? Could be. Anyway, Mr. Menon and I attended as well as Ms. Miller that evening. Mr. Cole was at Georgetown listening to a presentation that was given down there. So Bruce, do you want to update a little bit about the work we did and the work we're deciding to do?
We had a pretty wide-ranging conversation. I would say that the central sort of theme of the conversation is how do we make this work, as opposed to, you know, is this the right thing for students? I think there's, there's pretty much consensus among everybody that it's, that this is something that's in the best interest of students long-term. And again, it was a very wide-ranging conversation. What I did was Christina Davis took notes and I took notes, and I looked at her notes and I looked at my notes to identify a list of subject areas for further exploration that might be sort of subcommittees or working groups. And those areas were transportation, which the superintendent is going to look at, and sort of the major thrust of that essentially is blowing up transportation and really we, you know, starting from scratch to build a system that, that might, might be, might look different than we've got now, to see whether that's going to have some impact. Athletics, the impact on schedules at the high school, you know, whether they'd need to be early released for sports, impact on flex scheduling, it might impact on AP classes, we just need to explore some of these things. Middle school, length of day, elementary school, whether there'd be any changes in start time there. Staggered student schedules at the high school we would look at, professional development for after, after-school teacher support also could be impacted by it. Childcare, and the question we had was, do we need to provide or improve childcare options for parents, and whether we might need to set a breakfast program at the Brez if we changed the start time at the Brez. Impact on programming. One of the challenges is going to be working with the Mullen and the NOC if we change the NOC time and not change the Mullen time. They have shared staff and shared space, and that's going to really require looking at that. And whether we could also enhance our use of online activities and courses. Sort of a working group on the impact on students and parents. And among the topics that got brought up were homework at the elementary school level, the impact of later start times on elementary students. What's the impact on after-school activities like music lessons that private vendors are providing for, for students? Student jobs and internships, whether it would impact on that, and then two-income families losing quality time with their, with their students if they're staying later in the day or leaving later in the morning. And then there was a miscellaneous sort of an umbrella for a number of different topics that include really taking a look at statewide advocacy for expanding high school credit options for PE, for art, for work-study. We want to survey students in the community again. Communicating with parents about the change, implementing, whether we can implement the change incrementally, and the impact on the budget, both for the school and for the overall district. So those are the main sort of topic areas that we're going to be further exploring.
One other comment I would make is that one of the things that I think that has come to my attention from a couple of people, not necessarily since that meeting, but I've had conversations, is the concern about any change to later start times if it results in students being dismissed early. The concern about really taking a look at that in terms of the time that they have in class to participate in class, to really make sure that we understand any impact of that, is one other piece there.
How many people? There were about 50.
No, there were 50.
No, 30?
No.
30.
There were...
I counted them. Plus you have that on your...
Yeah, I mean, I have a sign-in sheet, I didn't count the numbers.
I would say close to 30.
I would say around 30, yeah.
And, and it was a pretty broad cross-section. People, there were teachers there, there were parents from the community, parents both in favor of it and parents who were not in favor.
Five teachers, five teachers there.
That's good. A city councilor.
City councilor came.
We had, we had representation in terms of administration from all of the buildings. And parents who represented all different levels. And a couple of nurses who were outside of the district.
Right. Who lent a perspective. So we meet again on the 28th, and the hope there is, people still had a lot of questions for the A.D. So rather than him going through the whole report that he gave us here at the school committee meeting, which was quite lengthy, we've suggested that people on that committee or anybody who wants to join us, it's open, make yourself familiar with what that report was so that Kyle will come for the first half hour to answer some questions. And then it's our hope that people will be able to talk about which group they would like to join for further investigation. So, and Susan also made it clear, and, you know, we agreed with her, that some of this subcommittee work will have to be done outside of the parameters of the two-hour meetings that we have. So it's our hope that we're really going to get up and running and be in subcommittees by the end of our next meeting. And then what Susan proposed was to bring everybody back together to just have a, you know, a, a short update from each of the, the sub-folks. So I guess that's all I wanted to say about that. Mr. Cole, is there anything you'd like to add from the, you want to talk a little bit about your parameter, your meeting?
So that was back on March 7th, that's the day you're looking for, March 7th. It's all right, no, I just...
Thank you.
No day last week.
Yeah, yeah, March 7th, yeah. And so I, I really wanted to go to, to see the presentation by Dr. Judith Owens, which is a really good presentation. And unfortunately, there's only 17 people there. I, I do know Superintendent Jacobs, and there was a school committee woman, Ms. Lundquist that I know. But it was a small group, and I would simply encourage a maximum turnout for when Dr. Owens comes here. And she's going to be ready to go. She'll get there on time. I happened to get there early to the meeting, which is unusual, but I got there early.
Sure.
We walked in at the same time, actually, and I recognized her from having seen her on a website and read about some of her work. And I also have a daughter who works at Boston Children's Hospital, so she's heard of her as well. So it was a very good presentation, very clear. The only things that I had some questions about was related to, and I did ask these in the forum, they had, they presented some car accident details that were really based upon student travel in Kentucky and Virginia, which might, might be a little more rural than what we might expect here or in Georgetown, and I pointed that out. And I asked if there was any controls done for the commuting length in any of these studies on accident, and there wasn't. But it's a very compelling presentation, and it's all about, you know, the health and safety of students. So I would just encourage as many people to come out forward as possible. And that's going to be on the 27th.
Yes, and there was another Blackboard Connect about that today, which I appreciated. The later school start time committee asked that. We kind of bombarded media and Blackboard Connect, I don't know if it, has it been in the paper yet?
I don't know the answer to that.
I'm not sure. So she's coming here, the NOC auditorium on the 27th at 6:30?
Seven o'clock.
Seven. So anybody in the audience...
6:30 for Steve.
Yeah, 6:30 for Steve. We would encourage you to attend that wonderful presentation to gain more information about later start times.
I have also been in regular contact with both Superintendent Jacobs and also Dr. Lyons at Masco, and I had a conversation with Kevin on Friday at the Shoreline Superintendent's meeting, and one of the things that he shared with me is that Masco had had a meeting earlier that week, and he recommended that I reach out to, they had had a presentation from the Sharon High School principal, who I have left a message for and will be contacting him. He said that he, the Sharon High School principal, makes a very compelling argument, but makes a very compelling argument for making a move to a later start time, but making it be a reasonable later start time that's not impacting everything within the school district. So I left him a voicemail message today, so when I hear from him, I will report back, and will certainly report to the group.
And they've had a later start time for how many years now?
Sharon, I don't know the, I don't know if Mr. Cole or that. I think he's got a report.
09, 10, I think they started in 2011, September 2011.
You have, you have a report, can you forward that to?
Yeah, I got a URL for the Sharon year later report.
How they went about it, what committee they had.
If you send that to me, Steve, I will get out to the school committee as well as the task force.
I'll be glad to do that.
It's, it's a good one, and it's really comprehensive. So I don't want to go over waters that have already been...
And I did have sent out, as people have sent me things, that has gone out to the stakeholder group, and one of the things that I will do, I hope tomorrow, is that I'm just going to send out sort of a general message to parents across the district about what the schedule is for the meetings, where the group is, just to give all of our parents an update. So that should happen tomorrow.
Is there anything else? NEF, CPAC? Mayor?
I don't think we've talked about that Nelson Burns has resigned as our school committee member at Whittier, so we need to replace that position. So I...
Brett's staying on, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he is sick, because we just, he just...
And when is that term up?
I'm not sure. I think that he, he's resigning quickly due to personal reasons, is what the, the information I received, so I think we need to fill that position sooner than later.
Is it interim?
Is it, what do you mean? I think he would, they would fill his position and then stay.
To the end of the term?
And then stay on. Maybe the goal.
I need to reach out to Maureen anyway about a presentation to this group and to find out the numbers that have applied, and just to get some more details from her. So I'm happy to call her and to get some more details on that and let the school committee know.
I should have kept my... It's, in terms of the Whittier assessment?
Yeah.
It was?
I know it's went up.
No, it went down than what we were originally told.
Oh, okay.
So that was actually good news. We thought it was going to be an additional $200,000, and it's only about $146,000 increase, and that includes the capital, but it's still like $568,000. I'm sorry, I forgot to bring the exact numbers, but I think that's what I remember in my head, and I know that was a piece of good information, that it was less than, it was supposed to be a $200,000 increase, it's a little bit less. So anyway, so if anybody can think of someone who might be interested in serving on the Whittier School Committee, please let me know.
And you have to be a resident of one of the town...
Yes. I would think you'd have to be a resident of Newburyport, right?
Newburyport.
To be a Newburyport, represent the Newburyport seat.
Do you have a list of those parents who send their kids?
Sure, we can get that.
We can get that, yeah.
Picking on them.
One last thing quickly that we forgot, so I want to make recognition here. The Asset Builder Award winners were announced. The Newburyport Youth Services and the Beacon Coalition announced the winners of the Ninth Annual Asset Builder Awards on, on March 21st at 7:00 p.m. in City Hall Auditorium. That's tomorrow, right?
It is.
My date. This is an annual recognition of community, do they already know? Should I be reading this?
They don't know.
I don't want to spoil it. Spoiler alert. Whoa! This is the annual recognition of community members who through their work encourage, empower, and support youths in one of eight categories of the 40 Assets. The 40 Assets framework developed by the Research Institute identifies a set of skills, experiences, relationships, and behaviors that enable young people to develop into successful and contributing adults. The greater number of assets a younger person has, the lower number of high-risk behaviors they get involved in. The Beacon Coalition uses this model as its framework for prevention. The 2017 Asset Builder Award winners are the Board of Trustees, Lydia's Kids Foundation in memory of Joey and Brislin, the Roberts Family, Christmas Tree Santas, Thomas Goodwin, a parent, volunteer, and coach, Michelle Rubicki, a school nurse at the Edward G. Moen Upper Elementary School, Diane Oberhein, a teacher at the River Valley Charter School in Newburyport, and Sue, I'm going to have trouble with this, I apologize, Siam Rouski, also a teacher at the River Valley Charter School, and Newburyport High School Coach Don Henninger. So they will all be wadded tomorrow evening at 7:00 at City Hall Auditorium if anyone would care to attend that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to those...
This is a very nice event.
It is, it's wonderful. And just in closing, one final thing, just if you could mark your calendars for April 28th, we will be doing a First Annual Sporting Fundraiser. We have the opportunity to match a challenge grant from the Richie Eaton Foundation for $50,000. So if anyone has sporting memorabilia or things they would like to donate for the silent auction or other things, please let me know. We are honoring three coaches that day. Also, it's going to be part of the annual event to recognize, you know, people who have done great work with our youth in sports, and that money will be used to help finish up some of the amenities that we need at the baseball field as well as NOC. And as we continue this every year, it's money that will go into maintenance and other things we need to support youth sports. And it's all, you know, a much-needed funding source for ours. So we never let any of our fields deteriorate to where they ended up.
To the tennis courts stage?
Tennis court stage, yes, or the old Brezner Hand Field stage, which you couldn't even really call it a field. But anyway, so just be, be great if, you know, we could get a good turnout from the school committee at this event. And again, please, if there's anything you can donate to help us with our silent auction, I would be very grateful. So thank you.
Thank you. Could I hear remote and do a adjourn if there's nothing else?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Gain to pass.
Come on, Frank.
I'm going home.